The approval of the June 5, 2019 minutes. I couldn't verify that they had been distributed to the board, so I'll just put that on the next agenda. Okay. And with that, entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
To Lou.
Lou.
Seconded.
Made by Jim, seconded by Lou. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Under Communications and Correspondence, tomorrow, which is the 20th of June, there's going to be a ceremony at the high school for Vietnam-era veterans. And Lieutenant Governor Susan Bicewicz and the Commissioner of Veterans Affairs, his name is Thomas Sadi, as well as myself, State Representative Christie Carpino, State Senator Norm Needleman, and other guests, I hope the rest of the selectmen, if their schedules permit, they attend. The ceremony will be at Portland High School at 5:00 in the evening. It will be relatively, I think, elegant but simple. We will have pledge of allegiance, as well as some short remarks from the various dignitaries that will be there. And then there'll be citations handed out to each veteran who's able to attend, recognizing their service to our country during the Vietnam War era. And there's also a special commemorative pin that will be given to each veteran. So if you are a veteran, you know someone who is, they're welcome to attend. Many of our veterans received letters. We were not able to guarantee we got to everyone. So that's why I wanted to mention it tonight. If we missed people, it certainly was unintentional, and we definitely would like to hear from them, and we would get them the citation and the pin at a later time and make sure that they receive this. Lieutenant Governor's office is starting with Portland to do this throughout the state. I know our Representative Larson had a session as well recently, and I think over the course of the next year, they're going to be visiting many, many towns and cities throughout Connecticut to remember all of the sacrifices that our veterans made during that very difficult war. Any questions on that?
Is that in the --
High School Auditorium. Yes.
Oh, okay.
93 High Street. Open it up for public comment. And we'll continue on to old business. I wanted to give a brief update on the 222, 230, and 248 Brownstone Avenue purchase and sale agreement that we have. As you may have read, the pipeline test that was done proved that the pipeline is intact. The nitrogen test showed that the 50 pounds per square inch that they put in the pipe was retained by the pipe 24 hours later, and then some. So we've received that report from Cortec, which was the vendor that the owner had hired to do that work. So that was one obstacle that we needed to make sure we knew the answers to, so now we do. What I would like to talk with the selectmen about is having a couple of times for people to physically go down and walk the site and see what the land is that we're talking about. It is right on the river, and the location, while we can explain it with words, I think seeing it is much better for people. So I wanted to ask the selectmen when they think that would be a good time. I personally would like to do maybe something next week, and then maybe another time the following week. What we also will need to do, and I need to get more information on the funding for the purchase. We do have quite a bit of the purchase price, which is $385,000 for 5.2 acres on the Connecticut River, that has already been set aside and saved, but I need to make sure that our finance office has given me, much like you saw earlier on this public hearing, the account numbers and how that would work, before we would establish the formal public hearing. So I'll open up to the selectmen to see if they had some suggestions on some dates for site visits.
So where are you looking at? Like us, the selectmen, being at the site?
A walk, much like we've done.
That like we did a year ago or whatever.
Yeah.
Now, as I recall, we didn't walk directly. I don't think we walked directly on the --
I did.
You did?
Yes, we did.
Okay, so we can get onto it.
Yeah, I will make sure we can do that.
All right.
I mean, at a minimum, I want people to physically see it, at least from the fence. You can see quite a bit from the Brownstone Avenue, and if you don't know that area very well, I think you feel more comfortable going there with someone who's going to escort you. But I'm going to ask the seller if we could open up the gate, and I would need some --
That's where I was going, yeah.
Yeah, open up the gate.
And I think it's a wonderful idea. Next week I can't, but next week after I could. But I think it's great to have the public look at that area and see what it is from, you know, the proximity to the river and according to the --
Proximity to the Brownstone Park.
Close to the Brownstone Park. So for many reasons, one, to be familiar with it, two, to be able to understand that not only is it this piece of property that we're going to clean up, which would be an environmental goodness, but then on top of that, we will be able to connect that to and visually see that a riverfront park is adjacent to that. So this is just an extension of the riverfront park, and it also is access to the river. So there's lots of ideas, and people say, "Well, what are you going to do with that property?" Well, maybe some of the people that walk there could, you know, fill out a piece of paper or just tell us. You know, I think this would be great for something that we have no idea what it could be used for, but they might say that it's a great idea. And the more people that we get to give us their input, I think the better we will be to be able to move this project forward.
I think that's good. Any others? New dates?
I was going to say, no, I agree. It'll be good to get down there, trying to figure out if there'd be a way to do it, you know, to accommodate people's work schedules.
Right, that's what I was saying, we had to do it at a time when --
It's either one in the evening or one during the day and the one on a weekend. I think the only thing we have to be careful of is the Brownstone Exploration Discovery Park and, you know, sort of be caught into their schedule when they're going to have heavier traffic areas, so.
Well, they close, I think, at 6:00 at night, so if we had one of the walks at 6:00, I think that would be good, maybe like tonight at 7:00, we had our public hearing. I would notice it as a public meeting, and it would be a selectman's walk, and anyone is welcome to come with us. And I would provide whatever information we have in terms of the statistics on the property so people would be able to know the acreage and some of the other facts and figures about the property.
Is our purchase-sale agreement still within its time --
Yes, you may need to extend it, I don't know. I need to look at it. I know today we are, but the seller has, we've been amenable to them for the things they needed to do. I mean, I'll point out that it took them over a year to make the determination how they were going to do that pressure test. And it was the selectmen that said they didn't want an air test, they didn't want a water test, they wanted, they wanted oxygen, whatever it was. They wanted a nitrogen test, which is an inert gas, and that is the standard for testing pipes. And that's what Buckeye Pipeline, which runs the pipeline that comes across the river and feeds at B&amp;B Petroleum uses to test pipes. So after a fashion, they understood and they found a vendor that they hired and they've done the test, and it turned out well. So I think they're amenable to having any extension necessary. I want people to make an informed decision, and I've been trying to put a lot of things on social media, as well as I put an article in the River East. And if anyone has any questions at any time, they can certainly come into the office. We have a Phase 1, Phase 2, and a Phase 3 environmental report that was done by Ty &amp; Bond Associates. So there's a lot of information. The other thing I wanted to just point out is that the state of Connecticut has been a partner with us in this project. For those who haven't lived here for more than 15 years, they may not know that the state provided almost a million dollars to the town of Portland to put in an extension of Brownstone Avenue from where it ended, which was about at 248 Brownstone Avenue, up to meet at Middlesex Avenue. They paid for, through a small-town economic assistance grant, the parking lot that's at the end of Middlesex Avenue, new sidewalks that run from the post office down to the parking lot, and then down the hill into the park. And they paid to have the town, the Public Works Department, brought in the water line and hooked up the sewer line. The grant also provided for the pavilion, which is where the party is tonight for the diversity group, and also the bathrooms, which are flush toilets with sinks and a storage area, and also the stage, which is where, with Brownstone Quorum and the Parks and Recreation Department, there'll be five concerts this summer. So there's a lot of activity. There's another very interesting development that I learned this week and got confirmed today, and that is, there is a person who purchased the land, it's about six acres, five or six acres, across the street from our riverfront park, and it used to be mined by Mike Meehan. He used to take the brownstone out of there, and he stopped a few years back. That property is sold today, and the owner came in to talk with me, and he stated how thrilled he is that the town is continuing to clean up and make that area an economically viable community and economic development site. So he's investing his money, and I certainly hope that the town vote shows that we also support the cleanup and the improvement to a great resource that we have down there. So if we don't go next week, it would be the following week, which I think would be July 1, which is a Monday, because I already have one selectman who can't be there next week.
Yeah, and I think I could go Saturday and Sunday, the 20, I don't know, the 30th?
29th, 30th.
29th, 30th? Yeah, I can, so that's Saturday, if you want to go Saturday, and maybe one time during the week, and maybe a third time.
It's up to the selectmen.
I, do we have a selectman meeting next Wednesday?
Yes, we do. This is --
Wait, no.
It's a town meeting next.
Yeah, the town.
Well, it's a town to vote on, we just talked about.
Oh, yeah. And it's here, though, right? It'll be --
And I have more news on that.
Okay. So we're going to be busy next Wednesday?
You're going to be busy. Complete Streets is doing a training for us, which is going to start at 6:00, and they're going to do a quick walk and show the sidewalks, and they're going to come back here. We'll have our town meeting at 7:00. They're very interested, as Mr. Townsend had pointed out, the digital speed signs, because that's a big part of our Complete Streets group, too. And then they'll reconvene after the town vote and talk about more plans for how we're going to improve our streets and our sidewalks and walkability and bikeability. So that's a pretty busy night, and I --
Is that a special board of selectmen meeting, or kind of --
It's a town, well, what it's going to be is a training, so it'll be, it'll be a selectman's meeting and anyone else, if the, say, if the whole library board wants to come, it would be a library board meeting. So we may notice it based on whom we invite, and then at the bottom, because, you know, I just went to FOI training today, we'll put an asterisk, and we'll say if a quorum shows up, then it's considered a meeting of the planning and zoning, or the inland wetlands, or the library board, or whatever it might be. So it opens it up for people to come and learn and still be able to be legal under FOI. So that's the 26th.
Okay.
So I don't know if you want to come out again that week, or if you want to go into the next week, or what your schedules permit. Open it up. Saturday is the 29th?
Saturday and 29th morning would be fine.
You're going to probably see some activity if we went at 9:00, that might be good. I think the park opens at 10:00.
Craziness of the park.
Yeah. That's one, and then how about the following week? Jim?
Well, if we're going to do that, I would say going as early as possible in the week with the 4th of July holiday.
It's now 7:45.
That's the only thing I worry about with that week, is a lot of people may be on vacation or off, so.
Yep.
I was originally thinking, you know, like next Tuesday, but obviously we'll have --
Well, I don't have to be there. I mean, as long as some people are there, that would work. Yeah. I think next week would be a good --
Sure.
It avoids the holiday week, is what I'm --
You know, for one night of the week, because you're out, you're out already one night, this would be the second night.
What's your schedule like?
That's what I'm looking at. So, all right, so we're going to be here Wednesday. I'm trying to think. I think there's Exchange Club next Monday night.
Yes.
Tuesday'd be okay, I guess, if you wanted to stay away from the holiday week.
So are we talking about a night thing then?
So an evening and then a Saturday, or just --
Yeah, that's what we said.
Yeah, that's fine.
So the 25th, do you want to make it 7:00? Ralph?
6:30 is fine.
Or earlier? 6:30? 6:30 might be a little better, and people can join whenever they get there. We'll probably still be there at 7:00.
Okay. So, June 20.
And then the 29th, you'll be able to join us.
Yep.
At 9:00. So I'll, right, so I'll list those as special meetings and invite the public to attend. And then we can see where we go from there. Any other questions or suggestions that you'd like to have? Selectmen?
Do we have maps of that area?
Yes.
So maybe people would like to look at a map?
Yes. It's a good suggestion.
Yeah.
It's good. Anybody else?
A map or some, I don't know, I brought some of my stuff, some, you know, there's some stuff I'm sure you have.
Yes, I have that. Yeah, that's a good one.
Some pictures or some maps, because we're probably not going to get in and walk every square foot of the property. But it'll give them, give everybody a kind of a good overview.
I like Lou's suggestion of having a mechanism for, to get feedback on potential ideas for, what people would think.
We can have some of that available, too.
I mean, that's really the purpose of the meeting. Everyone should be free to speak and say whatever.
Right, just have something that people can actually provide that to us, and we'll have a record of it.
Yep. We would meet right next door to 248, which is in a parking lot that we own, right next door, the riverfront parking lot.
Okay, meet there?
Yeah, I think that's the best place to park and then loop down.
Now, on the 29th, are we going to, are we going to be in the way of, is there going to be a lot of congestion because of the water?
It's first come, first served.
All right, so we'll be there real --
I don't think, I mean, we were there last week, whatever, that family day, and
They really get rock and roll after July 4th.
There was like six cars there at 11:00, so.
Yeah, July 4th, I think, is really when they start.
Okay.
There'll be some people there, though.
All right.
Definitely, so try to get there a little before 9:00 so you've got parking space.
All right. And what time are we getting together next Wednesday, did you say?
6:00.
6:00.
Yep. We'll send you more information on that.
Okay.
That's a training. Anything else? Any appointments to boards and commissions? I have none. So with that, we'll move on to the library renovation grant project, and we do have four more library board members, so you're free to speak and say. Margot, are you going to start us off?
Yes.
Would you like to start at the podium?
Yes.
And just to get acclimated, if you could let our recording secretary know your name and that you're the director, I, you're the library chairman. That's the director. Janet?
This is the basis for our presentation.
Could other board members do me a favor and give their name to the recording secretary as well? We'll start with you, Jay.
Jay, Ralph. Yeah, I don't know if he's called or not. Sometimes he shows up late.
Myra? Okay. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Margot Chapman, and I am the co-chairperson of the Portland Library Board. As you know, due to the initiative and hard work of our librarian, Janet Nocheck, we were awarded a state library grant to help make our library more accessible and user-friendly for persons with physical, visual, auditory, and autism spectrum challenges. The grant is for $108,000, and the library board unanimously approved matching that amount, plus another $30,000 for design plans and services from our endowment fund. So we have a total of $246,000. We anticipate there may be a need for further expenditures from the fund to complete the project. We have been very pleased with the design plan from Silver Petraselli, which we have up here, if you want to look at later a little more closely. They've done a beautiful job, and it will not only achieve the goals of the grant, but refresh the building using warm, relaxing colors and designs. Integral parts of the plan are to, one, replace the original main doors for which replacement parts are no longer available; two, replace lighting fixtures for energy efficiency and brightness; three, purchase tables that are adjustable in height to accommodate wheelchairs or walkers; four, to purchase sofas and chairs with arms that are designed for easy accessibility for people of various age groups and physical challenges; five, since the library may be used in emergency situations, we will add more charging stations and outlets without extensive rewiring; and six, replace the existing carpets with carpet squares in three colors that will lead visually challenged patrons to the various areas in the library. We had been very excited that all this could be done without using any Portland taxpayer funds. However, on the advice of Bob Shea, a moisture study was done, and unfortunately, it was discovered that moisture remediation is necessary before new carpet can be laid. The remediation work also requires raising the book stacks at an additional cost. Before that, we thought the carpet could be budded right up to the stacks, but for the remediation, they're going to have to be raised. The town has provided maintenance and capital improvements to the library in the past, and while the library board recognizes that this is a difficult time to ask the town for financial assistance, we feel very strongly that since the library is a town building, any building-related issues should be funded by the town. As stewards of the endowment fund, we feel that, like the Gildersleeve Fund for Education, our fund should only be used for enrichment projects. We also have a time requirement of the grant, that work be started by early October. Let me end with the thoughts that occurred to me while at the library one Saturday morning. In what other public building would you see the broadest section of Portland residents engaged in a variety of activities? There were parents reading to their children, a knitting group, tutors with students, teens on computers, an elderly gentleman reading the newspaper, and people of all ages checking out books. And in cold weather and during emergencies, our library is a place of refuge from the cold and social interaction for the lonely. This is a unique opportunity for the library and for Portland, and we hope we can count on your timely assistance in funding the complete moisture remediation portion so our project can be completed. I'm hoping that Mr. Shea can give you more details on the cost and the process for the remediation.
Thank you, Margot. Thank you. Did you want to add something, Paul?
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Jan has been very instrumental in the entire process, and I have to say that your grant was already awarded before I became an employee. So, sorry for muddying the waters. But sitting back over the years in many meetings and listening to the previous director related to the energy that we use in this facility to not only heat but cool it, and with that, when I say heat, we actually use the heating system just as much, if not more, in the summer to take moisture out of this building. And it is directly related to where this building is built, and it's basically built on a very swampy area. So with that said, I knew that I needed to reach out to the current HVAC and heating vendor that we use now, who are excellent, and I researched a little bit of history on the building, and we definitely knew that we had some moisture issues. The reason why I think some of those issues were not addressed is very clear. You're really not going to address those issues until you decide to address the floor, and here it is in your plan. You're looking to 90% of your carpet, 85% of your carpet is going to be replaced in this project. So with that said, I thought it was important to get some studies done, which we actually bore holes in the floor to see what our moisture content comes back at. We did that in March. It was pretty cold, and our moisture results were high, in the 60s, in 70%. I can't imagine what they'd be now. So we have an issue. And with that said, my recommendation is to seal the floor during this process so that we can, number one, extend the life of the new carpet and the new flooring that's going to be put into the facility, and number two, take the burden off of our current heating and air conditioning system. We spent an awful lot of money putting a new system in the facility, but we spent an awful lot of money on energy to keep this facility running at the required humidity that we need to do to save your books and all of the things that are here and that are offered to the public. So with that said, we've done a lot of studying, and we have a estimate, as well as all the numbers that you have are just estimates, and from Silver, and we do our best to work with them to try to find the closest numbers that we may receive back when we go out to bid. They could be more, they could be less, we're not sure, but we hope that those numbers are always close. That's why we have an architect work so close with us. We have a $58,000 estimate to seal the floors with a two-part epoxy system, and that system is directly related to the moisture content that we see. There are other methods to seal a floor. That would be an adhesive plastic is one of them, but when you reach a certain percentage of moisture, then, when you get up over 50, really, especially in the 60s range, the proper mitigation of those is the epoxy, which completely blocks that moisture from coming through the pad. So that's the recommended professional process to seal the floors. We won't be doing this room, we won't be doing the rooms that aren't part of the construction. If we were to though, to do those rooms, which we'd have to remove the carpet that has been replaced, I don't think that's necessary, we could do that later, your mitigation goes up considerably to about $80,000. So, will those numbers come in less? They could. Industry standards -- Industry standard is anywhere between $5 and $5.20, 25 cents a square foot, or up to 6, but the quote that we have was estimated at $5.25. So we're kind of in between. I think those are good numbers. Do I think that it needs to be done? I do. Do we need to do it? That's up to the board and up to the Library Board. Some of these challenges come from the fact that we needed to hire an architect to move forward on this project. And Jan was very supportive when I told her, when I first started, that there's really no way to move forward with a project like this without an architect. You have to have construction documents, you have to have the inspections when the process is going on. The schematic that was brought forward, which was a very good one, really just gave an estimate to go out to get funding for the grant. I think it missed a lot of important things that we needed to do. And luckily enough, and you were gracious enough, to fund the architectural portion of it, which is incredibly important. And now we need to move into that direction. Can we see some savings as far as the racks? I think we can. I do not think they need to be removed. We have an option that we can save some money on moving the books as well as the shelves. And some of that will be discussed, I'm sure, with Jan tomorrow. Because the shelving has space that allows us to take the lower discussion, we call it, it's removable, we can get under those shelves and we certainly could seal the floor. If there's enough, four inches is a roller size and they would roll and hand seal under those. It also gives us the opportunity, and I threw this out and apparently it's done, can we wrap or shrink wrap the existing books on the shelves to protect them while we're putting carpet down and sealing? We can do that. We certainly can do that. Because moving books is extremely expensive. And if we can cut that by 50% for those shelves that will not move, then we're not damaging the floor removing them with that possibility. Have to reinstall them and we can save that money. So I'm hoping that you'll be able to move in that direction as well, which should save some money overall in the project and we can see where we are there. I'm not, just not sure where those numbers will come in. We have estimates for that option, which saves about 50% of, I think, of some of the moving costs, which will help. But like I said, we have to be optimistic that the numbers will come in lower than what our architect is suggesting. And we've made some great improvements, I think, on some alternates. I think alternates are critical when you go to bid. It gives you the opportunity to build onto your project without being forced and have to rebid because you're, you come in much higher than you can afford. So I offered to Jan that we should make a lot of the sections that we hope to get done as alternates and those will be priced accordingly. And the board and the town can build on that to get to that magic number to make these, I think, are great improvements to the library. So I'll hope as much as I can at this stage. That could be your stepping stone. It is costly and I'm not really quite sure how that falls in. So.
Questions? Rick?
So a couple of questions. Is the integrity of the concrete slab in good condition despite all this moisture?
I believe so. I do. I haven't seen it. I did not see the slab when this carpet was replaced or any other areas. I do think that it is good. I think we would have some major issues if it wasn't. But you don't see any of, or areas of the carpet actually degraded more than others. It's basically uniform wear, if you were to look at the carpet that's there. I don't, I mean, maybe Jan has seen other areas, but I don't. I think what happened is, over time, to be perfectly honest with you, there's a moisture barrier under this slab. It's gone. Because the wetter it is, the faster that moisture barrier, which is usually plastic, a certain grade plastic, deteriorates. And I think at the age of the library, that's basically gone. And each year, that moisture content is growing.
I'll point out, Rick, that way before you were on this board, we were asked to replace the carpet for a long time. And we've only done this room. I think the children's room was done by donation, if I'm not mistaken. And then the Mary Wagner room was done, was it done when this was done?
Yeah. And then there were some repairs and stacking.
What I recall talking about when that would come up during budget time was not so much that we needed to address the moisture problem, but it was the wear and tear on the carpet itself that we talked about. Would you agree? But I did want to point out that we were, the selectmen that were here at the time, because the present selectman other than I, were not here. We were told that needed to be replaced and we put it off and put it off.
You mean the carpet or the actual?
The carpet. We were not told in any detail about the moisture situation. And to Bob's credit, he's had the testing done. So he's not guessing. He knows that it's wet. One question and then we'll go back to you, Rick, but I just don't want to forget this. And that is, in terms of any data. So we know about what it is in March for that slab. We know, our HVAC people should know a little bit about the cost of heating and cooling. Would you be able to get any kind of estimate that would be of a substantive nature that would then allow the selectmen to know that going forward, should we do this project, which we're, we have to do it. I shouldn't say should, we have to do it. Is there going to be some savings that we'll realize? And if so, what would be a range for us to count on?
Yeah, yes. I think I'll have to reach out to someone that may have some experience in that moisture related to energy. I know there will be savings just for the fact that we're utilizing the system so much to do both. When you have to heat to take the moisture out of the air, because what you're doing is you're cooling so much, then you're reheating because you're cooling to remove the moisture. Then you have to reheat because your temperature goes down so much. So you're basically doing a little bit of each and that's what it is. So it kind of keeps the middle of the road. If you can just cool and not rely on the up and down and you're going to have a much more steady, it's just basically like if you were to use your AC in your home, all the new contractors say, set it and forget it. Because the fluctuation is what hurts. If it takes longer to cool, then you're spending more time and energy. So what we're trying to do is, I think, we're trying to mitigate the moisture so that the system can work more efficiently and more steadily and not struggle between the two. To get that data, so I'll have to reach out to see if I can do that through our heating and air conditioning consultant or the contractor that we use. And I'll try to do some research to see, is there a percentage? Is there a percentage of savings if we're at 70% moisture content? Is, does that relate to, if we remove that, does that relate to a number for savings? But can't imagine there would not be. And the energy to run this building is high. It's extremely high.
So along the same line, on the same thread, I know you said you used a lot on, maintenance on the equipment is very difficult. I know we're talking about saving on energy costs, but what about maintenance savings?
Oh, it is. I mean, you know, we were here, I think we talked about it a few months ago. We had it come in, we had some issues with the heating, the heating over the winter, directly related to over-usage of components that should last twice as long. Absolutely. So you have fan motors that are running nonstop. So they're lasting half their expected life cycle. So we had some components that failed this winter that we didn't have readily available on a Saturday and had to unfortunately close a few days to get up and running on a Monday. And those were directly related to, and this comes from the, our contractor, usage, usage. And it's those simple things. It's those components that aren't the main portion of the furnace that's covered under warranty. It's all those incidental fans and relays and circuit boards that are overtaxed.
Rick, I want to go back to you.
Okay, so I want to ask you about the lighting. But before we leave the floors, where I was going is I just want to be certain that you're certain that the integrity of the concrete hasn't been compromised because I hate to see us just put sort of this Band-Aid layer over, you know, this epoxy layer, but that the concrete itself is starting to break down. I actually had a floor in a store where the concrete just turned to dust-like. I mean, we had to literally pour new concrete because it was totally compromised.
We haven't seen any of that, certainly under the carpet. Sometimes that happens under tile. You don't get to see it as easy as you do under carpet. I don't see any under, you know, our maintenance staff is here every day. I don't see any uneven floor areas that would show cracking. We would be, if we had cracks in the floor, we'd see moisture, I think, instead of vapor, I would say. But you know what? I can't guarantee that until the carpet's up. And that process of sanding and, it's a pretty extensive process before you can seal the floor. They have to basically sand it and get it to a surface that takes the ceiling and the epoxy. But that's all part of the process. I'm sure, you know, we'll certainly see what the floor looks like when the carpet comes up. But, you know, it's good.
Maybe to talk to your predecessor and see if there was, or even the contractor that did this and see if there was any thing that they recall. I don't remember them at least informing me of any problems when they redid this floor, which isn't too long ago.
No, I didn't see anything. I actually saw the purchase of this.
Six, eight years ago, 10? I don't know.
It's a great question.
How about the Mary Wagner?
Yeah, well, I'm just trying to, you know, kick the tires.
Excuse me.
Okay, then my other question was on the replacement of the lighting fixtures. Have you looked at these energy programs that are sponsored by the state and the power company where they come in and they basically retrofit your fixtures with LEDs? And they give you, they essentially pay for half of it.
Question for Jan?
So.
Yeah, I think that was talked about. The only fixtures that actually included here were the sections near the front deck and then along the wall toward the driveway side. It's gone since, yeah, so it's not all of the lighting. It's a whole project that would be the one to totally.
Because that's a good project that businesses have taken advantage of. But they're available from municipalities too.
Ever Source's representative had come in to see me because we're talking about some power purchase agreements for solar. And they came in to talk about other things they can do to improve the lighting and/or the envelope of some structure. And I mentioned the architect's name to that gentleman. So maybe some follow-up on that. I'll follow up with him and maybe follow up with Silver Petroselli and see what they have to say. And he has worked with them on some of these improvement projects. When you do their jobs, as you know, because you've done it, Rick, they put in typically a higher quality product. So they cover that delta between what you would pay for the lower cost and then they'll cover the higher cost. So you should get a better quality product.
Not only that, but you, what they put in uses less electricity.
Yes, that for, that's a good point.
I've done several of these when I had my stores and we essentially paid it back with the electric savings. And it was a two, three-year payback. And then, you know, you just keep reaping the savings as you go forward. And they had program after program where it started where they went from the T12 fluorescents down to the T8s and now they're doing LEDs, which are even bigger savings and you get so much more life out of the LED light too. So it might be something.
We need to follow up on that.
I know some contractors that specialize in that program too. So we could always contact them.
We had, we had, like, where we placed, I think it's quite that new, whatever you're talking about. And I thought, oh, we're all set. So then I found out, oh, we're not.
Yeah.
And I'll call our representative as well.
Yeah, so just with that said, it's not part of the scope of this prep, this.
Oh, that wasn't, I wrote down.
There are some lighting, there are some lighting changes, but certainly not as universal as you're speaking about. But I think it's a great program to look into.
Well, we might want to look into it anyway because we can probably save electricity and they might pay for it.
Yep, good point. They are looking at the company that Lou and I have been working with, the Green Bank. And this is one of the buildings they're looking at for the potential of having solar panels. Now, they need to look at a lot of things. They need to look at the roof. They need to look at whether or not, I think the orientation is good, but they're going to be getting back to us. They're looking first at the high school, middle school complex, which is a huge building, of course, and Gildersleeve School, which has a lot of roof as well. And we'll hear back from them in a few weeks, I think.
This is the Green Bank?
Yeah, that program, you don't put any money into buying the panels, but rather, the Green Bank would be the owner of the panels. They work with other companies that help them do this. And then you, the town, are sold the power at a certain kilowatt hour price that is below what the standard is and that is fixed for 20 years. So you save a little bit the first year, but then predicting that rates may go up over 20 years, you would save even more as each year goes on. So those are some other ways to try to save money on the yearly cost of electricity and/or heating or cooling or whatever it might be. That adds up. We did, we did do a lighting project about, I'm going to say now it's five or six years ago, Jan. And they did do, as you said, some improvements, but it's probably time to look at it again.
Yeah, I know the schools did a lighting project maybe a couple, two, three years ago now. But that was predicted to have about a 4.2-year, you know, year payback.
Right. The other thing that we did here was controls. And our HVAC contractor is looking at making sure that's up to date and working. The mechanisms by which all these pumps work and pooling and heating and all that. So, you know, there's all different ways of trying to approach costing.
This building is a challenge for the rest that have to maintain.
And it is a concrete block building. Well, it has, I don't know enough about it, but it's, doesn't look like my house. We have the insulation and then the wall and then the paint and so forth.
Hopefully there's insulation in the.
I didn't, I was, I'm not, I've been around a while, but not that long. I don't remember.
I forgot. When did this building get built? I mean, it was.
1982.
Okay. I was here, but I don't remember when, but it's been a while.
I just moved to town.
Ralph, did you have something you wanted to add?
Well, I do have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I know when we met last and we went through that design again and talked about some of the features and changes. She was talked about going away and doing some new pricing. Have you, have you heard back from her since our last meeting in terms of?
Yeah, we got, we have somewhat updated pricing. And she's meeting with Amanda from Silver Petroselli.
I mean, I think I remember.
She will meet us tomorrow night as well regularly. So I will be in between September.
I hope so.
Yeah, she did update. Some things are better, some things weren't. Tim, John, it did come down somewhat. We're still, you know, with my fling, we're just trying to figure out if we had to spend, you know, all the estimates were correct in the project, when we use the contingency, we'd probably be in the red about $20,000 with just cleaning the windows and stuff. We've already, we did cut out parts of the project already because the initial idea was to have more space between the desks and the doors. Well, we have our front doors, there's the double doors. And we wanted to have a little more space of it. The original architect thought, well, take out those walls. We just have, be a smaller airlock out there. But that proved to be not feasible. We feel that was going to be another project really. So we've already cut that out. So we're a little concerned we don't have to cut out. Now, because the rent, you know, the state issued $1,000. So we're going to do certain things to make certain. So we're going to do certain things, do certain types of improvements. A certain percentage was to go towards energy savings and a percentage was to go towards making it more accessible for people with disabilities. And so that's why they were just giving something pretty up for it, saying, let me, let me complete things, like concrete, we're good.
So hopefully, hopefully, knowing that we talked about the optimal time to go to bid and trying to get the pricing for the fall. Well, you know, because I know with our park project, that was one of the gotchas. I mean, we got a very good bid back, but it still was higher and we had to continue working through it before we could even, you know, go forward. So we'll just hope that this one will come in more in line.
Do you want to say something?
I've done more bidding, I think, in the past year than I have in 29 years. And I will say to you all that, I hate to say, you know, what the economy is driving prices this way. Everybody's busy and we're getting less people that are quoting and bidding. And the ones that are, no. We saw some big numbers for projects that we thought that were going to be, you know, in a certain number. So we hope maybe we can hit it, you know, after the summer, get out today by September and get a-
Timeline together.
Get a good timeline there where maybe that's the slow period and somebody might jump on it with a good number.
Do you expect to, or are you planning to have this work done over the winter or when it's cold weather or?
It's absolutely indoor.
It's indoor work, so what I'm thinking is these contractors are going gangbusters now because they're trying to make, make hay while the sun's shining, so to speak. And they're fighting the rainy weather and stuff, but basically they're doing a lot of their outside work. But come wintertime-
You're gonna get labor contractors.
Yeah, well-
The schools will do a lot of work in the summer. We were told to try to get the bids out like now and do it in fall. We do have to get something signed before October.
Oh, part of, okay.
Part of the grant.
But they don't necessarily have to start in October?
They probably don't have to start.
They have to be in contract.
Hopefully, they'll be in contract.
Yeah, okay.
The second part of our discussion, though, goes around the fact of you're trying to figure out, you're taking down the library for periods of time. Is there a better time to do it than others do? That also comes into play in our discussions that we have.
Will you actually have to close some days?
There may be some days, especially for ceiling because of that product.
Oh, yeah.
Like, there's, there may be some phases of the project that Jan and I spoke about with Amanda that can be done. Like, certain areas of the library can remain open if people, and other areas being worked on. Like, are you doing carpet installation if it squares, depending on how it's adhesive or, you know, how it's glued? That might be an issue. We'll have to kind of gauge that and maybe take those days accordingly depending on what it is.
Well, epoxy generally is kind of odoriferous. You don't want to be around that smell, so you might have to-
And there's not a lot of windows. Like, no windows, right? Or do you have some windows on the back by the children's area? Yeah, but not very, not much mechanically vented. Thank you. Well, obviously, there's, there's a hole in the budget. That is why the board is here to talk with us. And I, I'm just gonna repeat the numbers again because I think I wrote them down, Margot. So the grant from the state of Connecticut is $108,000. The memorial, is it memorial?
Endowment.
Endowment fund, excuse me, endowment fund, which is money that's all been donated to the library and invested. And I think that's probably about 20 years old. Is it that old? Anybody? Jan?
Something like that. It was actually interesting when it started when they raised money to put that airlock in.
Right, yeah.
It's probably at least 25. I don't remember.
I'm not sure they-
I wasn't even-
Vent, because I remember when I was on, when I was the selectman, they didn't want to spend any of the money until they got to $100,000 or whatever that figure, that threshold was. And I, I'll also say that if anyone wanted to make a contribution to this project, it's certainly welcome, right, Margot? Because honestly, sometimes people do make that as part of their mission. So we'll publicly ask if anyone's interested in giving money to the project. We're happy to acknowledge that. That's how you've been able to accomplish $138,000. So that's going to leave a delta of the $58,000. The $20,000 that you mentioned you're over budget, I know we're not going to probably be able to help with that.
No, I mean, we, we, it's a big problem, it's only contingency. And that's why I said we anticipate we'll use money from the fund-
In addition.
In addition.
The problem was for people who really were sensitive to what the endowment was meant to be, to then say that we would use the money for the mitigation of moisture for a town or building might not sit right.
I understand it. I can't tell you tonight from where those kinds of dollars would come. The only thing that we have in an operating budget, which is starting July 1, the budget has $100,000 contingency. We typically don't spend contingency on July 1, but this is an unforeseen expense. It's not something that was, that was budgeted. So it's something for the selectmen to think about. I don't think you appear tonight to give an answer. But certainly your presentation, Margot and Bob, with Jan and Betsy and everybody else, Myra.
Jay and Laura.
Jay, thank you very much, gives a good perspective on what it is you're doing and how it's proceeding. I think it's going to be a great project. And I want to thank you for, for your work, Jan and board. It's really, really good.
Ken, I want to understand the numbers better. I took some notes. There was a state grant for $108,000?
A hundred and eight, uh, four hundred and fifty-two.
Okay. And then I wrote, the board will match the state grant?
Yeah, right. We know a hundred and eight would go to that one.
So that's, okay, so how, how do you, where'd the money come from for the board? Like, how is that-
From the endowment.
From the endowment?
Invested, invested and making money.
Okay, plus you were gonna take another-
Rick is aware of the endowment.
Yeah, how big is the endowment? Or what's the endowment?
Quick update on that, Jan?
Yeah, just, because then I thought you said you were also gonna take another 30 from the endowment?
If necessary.
If necessary, okay.
Well, they're already-
Yeah, I don't know much about this endowment, so just-
Yeah.
For the architect, okay, so you've already been tapping in, all right.
There was a few thousand that had been, the board had allowed to come out of one of our funds. We have a memorial fund that's more of a kind of, money goes in and out. The friends will give us, you know, reimbursement for things that we buy, such as the DVD collection or the programs. But then, so there is the state, we get a little state grant every year, a few thousand, that goes into that fund. And we'll use it toward things like some new furniture or some whatever, programming or something. So, but the endowment fund, that started, as Susan was saying, quite a few years ago. And it's been invested and it was started, there was about $100,000, I think, and it's, it's, there is-
Well, they got there, but they, they got there.
A good amount now, yeah, yeah, so we're-
And auctions, they had all kinds of-
We've had fundraisers.
Fundraising endeavors. There was a lot of work done.
And many generous people. We had someone come forward who asked me, you have an endowment fund? She said, oh, I have to make, you know, a distribution from my retirement, you know, every year or so. She, she loves the library and she gave us very generous for some years. So, you know, we get things like that, that if things aren't-
You still accept money to it?
Oh, yes. We would love to. Have you checked? Sure, yeah, no, it's great. Sometimes people will, you know, do memorials and things and they'll say it's unallocated, you know. It's, if there was no particular thing they want us to do, then we put it into the endowment. So it's grown quite a bit with the investments. And the town's done a great job. Tom's fantastic. They get people to look after the funds.
FIA, associates, they're the, Chris-
Rollins, Mr. Rollins.
Chris Rollins is our fiduciary.
Okay.
Yeah, no, it's terrific. So, and they're very good at answering questions if we wanted to make, think of changes that might be good that the town thinks needs to, that, no. So it's a good fund, a good, good, absolutely, we would, where's the camera? We welcome donations, so, yeah.
And Margot had alluded to the Gilder Sleeve Wheeler Fund, which is within the Board of Education.
Right.
Not unlike this endowment fund where people have given money and it sits very separate from the rest of activity. And unless there is a need above and beyond the normal, it's not utilized. I mean, that, that, there is a, it was either a resolution or certainly an understanding by the accounts as to how that money can and cannot be spent. And there's a threshold beneath which they can't go. So there's a lot of rules associated with the use of that money. And that's what the board is trying and will adhere to.
Yeah, the board, they're great stewards of the funds, you know. They do watch out for it. And the town takes care of the actual investments, so it's to their financial people, so it's really great.
And the memorial fund is another fund that they utilize for, for smaller projects ongoing.
It's more, they're today.
General fund money for the library and then the library itself does fundraising through donations, goes into the memorial fund or the endowment fund. And then the Friends of the Library, which is a 501(c)(3) designated organization with the mission to help the library, provides additional funding, particularly for programs and other endeavors.
So that's another account.
Yeah, that's not the account.
That is their own, their own organization, right?
That's like a brownstone quorum. It's a 501(c)(3) separate organization that sometimes people think is your board. They have a separate-
Well, actually, I thought that.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I'm glad you asked this question, truly. It is a little hard for people to realize that, and the Friends do great things and have an annual fundraising ask. And then they do the book sales and all of that. They do a lot of work. And they give us at least $20,000 a year in, you know, toward our programming and our DVD collection and things like that. Museum passes, they do many, many things.
Do it tremendously.
But that's kind of ongoing that they keep, yeah, so they, they do not have a big fund. They just keep, you know, giving it to us, so, you know, they're great. But they manage very well, just amazing bunch of volunteers that keep it going.
So let me ask you this. You're not going to deplete your endowment fund with this project?
No, that's one of the reasons that we're here.
Oh, you can only go to a certain level?
Right, right, yeah. We have a policy, I could send that to you, that was decided along with, you know, the town, with Tom Robinson, the finance department and the board had met, and there's a policy about how it's handled.
Okay.
So, good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions? So we'll, we'll have this on a later agenda for further discussion and we'll certainly keep the board informed. Thank everybody who presented tonight and those who attended as well. Is there anything else that the board wanted to comment on? Jay or Myra, anything additional or we're pretty much covered? Betsy? Bob?
Dinner? You ate last week.
I think, I think your presentation time is over. Thanks very much, everybody.
Thank you.
We have no refunds of excess payments tonight. And status and committee reports. I'll open that up to the selectmen. Ralph, did you have anything to add?
Sure, I could give a park update.
Sure.
The back soccer field has been, the soil's down, it's irrigated and it's seeded and it's hopefully growing.
You answer.
Because the front soccer field, today, they were preparing it for seeding. I don't know if they actually did the seeding, but the irrigation's in it as well. So, so that's set there. On the baseball fields, they have all the soil down and they were finishing up the irrigation. And so I don't know, because of the weather, they've kind of lost a little time here with all the rain. But maybe this week, maybe early next week, they'll get to seed them. We'll have to see how it plays out. So they're rolling along. They also got the equipment last week because I got a call from a neighbor about a tractor trailer being in their property at night. And they got the equipment for the tanks that are going to be used for the irrigation, for the splash pad irrigation. And they actually have the splash pad, the above-ground splash pad equipment is actually at their, their office. So it already has come, so it was, so they have all the equipment for it. So they have a lot of work ahead with that.
When can I go to the splash pad? Do we know yet? Next year? September, maybe?
Better have a warm September, huh? Hoping for a hot September?
Sure. The playground will begin.
Well, it's starting to look-
Yes.
Look like a park.
Yeah.
You know, when you drive by, you can really see the ball fields and stuff now.
Yeah, we walked, last, we walked it a few weeks ago with the committee. And Jim has great pictures. He used his drone to get some great pictures.
Jim has some amazing pictures.
Yeah, I can pass these if you want to see them, but they're, basically, it's just some aerial shots that show the dirt coming in.
Was that the diamond there?
Yeah.
Baseball, yeah, okay.
Nick, you've seen them. I can pass them down.
I've seen them too.
There's like five or six of them to go.
Yeah.
But it shows the soccer field, the irrigation working, the seeding being done. They're progressing nicely.
So, yeah, so that's moving along, going well. I was trying to think of the timing, whether the dog park-
I think they said they see it last week.
They've asked to come and build, bring a report. I told them either tonight or the 19th of July, which is our next regularly scheduled meeting.
I don't think they would have been ready for tonight. I mean, I was there, they went through. They're, they're making progress and they are putting together their, I don't know, the boards that they'll bring in to show.
Oh, really? Great.
So, yeah, they've made a lot of progress.
Maybe July, then.
Yeah.
And then we have the library report, so thank you. Jim, anything you?
Um, I-
Board of Ed?
That's not a department. The, I did go to the Board of Education meeting last night. There was a presentation that basically, that was put in place that closed the remaining gap. It had to do with taking some money from a line item. There was a good number of, basically attendees, of parents, and specifically talking about the issue with the fifth grade teacher and whether or not they would be five sections, four sections. So they're still looking at some potential cost-saving measures and doing some things, how they could retain the fifth grade teacher and then just add the one section of kindergarten. So there's, and this is actually in the context of, do you look at, still, they're still talking about, do you look at pay-for-play? Was one of the things that was discussed.
I, I am not in favor of that.
I, I am also not in favor of that. I'm just reporting at this point. Fortunately, the way that came out, it was, that was tabled until a special meeting on July 10, specifically because there's some, they're still working with Oak Hill, which is the group that's looking at potentially leasing some space and-
So they haven't contemplated any revenue from Oak Hill yet?
Correct. They have, they have not yet. And that's, that's, I think, what the important part of this discussion is.
I'm supposed to meet with them and Superintendent O'Reilly, so I'll be able to give you a report back on that. That's, that's what they had contemplated as being a source of revenue for sports.
Right, and that's where I was going, is that instead of, and really, because the gap is closed, I think that's what, that revenue would more go towards, that's how you would fund that other teacher position and sports would be off the table. So what they did agree to do, they know that they're still working on determining that revenue source, is that they are going to post the position that they need to post. That way, they don't get into a situation where the window passes and they can't get a qualified candidate or it's more difficult to get a qualified candidate. And so they're proceeding down that path and then they're obviously waiting for these other revenue sources to see exactly how they're going to manage that.
So post the position for what, this fifth grade teacher?
I believe it's an elementary, it's an elementary teacher. I believe the plan would be to leave the five sections of fifth grade as they are today, right? It wouldn't make necessary sense to move that around and then have to hire a fifth grade. I believe what the plan was, they didn't fully articulate it, but if I understood it correctly, it was you leave fifth grade the way it is and then you look at hiring the, for the additional section of kindergarten. Because that's what's driving that. We have a high level of registrations for kindergarten.
We can hire a kindergarten teacher.
Right, right. That's, that's what I believe they're currently looking at right now. That's, that's what I believe they're currently looking at right now with the posting, but I do know that they specifically said elementary, that they would be hiring for. Okay, that would mean they would be adding the section of kindergarten, as well as trying to find a mechanism to keep the five sections. The driver there is if they go down to four sections of fifth grade, which they were looking at, because that's a little bit smaller than average class, your class sizes could go, um, to twenty-two, twenty-three per class. All right, if you have five sections, it'll be probably around eighteen per class. Um, obviously the eighteen is preferable, if you can keep it. Right now, um, what I'm hearing, the current first grade was twenty, twenty-one per class. So it would be an increase if, if they didn't make any changes. And if they, if they lost that section, it would definitely, would increase, perhaps more than we typically like to see.
Kindergarten or first grade?
That would be the fifth grade, because what they were looking, what they were looking at doing was, basically, because they have a large kindergarten influx of kindergarten age students. Adding a section of kindergarten without adding a position, so that position would have to come from somewhere. So they were looking at, how do you do that with, do that with a fifth grade?
But now that sounds like that's not going to happen.
It sounds like, right, what they're trying to do right now is figure out that revenue source, which could be Oak Hill, or something of that nature, or like I said, the other options, which I don't think are, at, at least, you know, is preferable to a lot of folks, um, basically to fund that fifth grade position.
Does that still leave the middle school sports on the table?
My, there was a, there was a, it was an interesting coming out of that meeting, is that there was some confusion, I think, especially when you look at Facebook, where someone said middle school sports being cut. There was no serious discussion that I took away from there, that middle school pro, sports would be cut. It was more a proposal to institute a pay-for-play across middle school and high school sports. But that hosted, and, and this is where, I think rightfully so, that discussion progressed. But you can only go so far without some study, because different sports have different cost models, it's different, you know, you know, across the board, there's a whole lot of different considerations, including that if you start charging a fee, you retain the same numbers. All right, do you, do, if you're assuming you've got X amount of people playing these sports, if you charge a fee, you know, uh, you're going to get a certain amount of revenue, but then how many people do you have to assume you're going to lose? You know, and, you know, and I think that we really want to make sure we avoid that, so. So it was, it was an interesting night last night, and actually, other than that, everything went very smoothly. Like I said, the initial proposal that was put, put through, basically, there was some estimating that was done, a refinement of the estimating that was done for, um, a, basically a line item in benefits, in the insurance line item, and they were able to basically reduce that line item to a point where that would close the gap. The only issue is that it just left that, how do you fund and keep the fifth grade section, keep five fifth grade sections? So that's what they're wrestling with now.
So we have five fifth grade?
I believe it's five, yeah.
That's a pretty big class, right, for, for, for our seniors right now.
I think it's ninety, I think, uh, uh, if the average would be eighteen, you know, with five, puts you in that nineties range, right? It's a little bit smaller, and so, you know, but I think we're over, at a hun- at or over a hundred registrations for the kindergarten already. So that's the concern with, you don't necessarily want to be over twenty per, on the class size, especially at that age level. So they're working through that. Good?
Any other questions? Any other reports? Lou?
Uh, as far as the airline trail goes, um, we had a conversation with the YMCA. So the YMCA seems like the last, uh, landowner to, um, give us approval. Uh, they've given us a verbal approval. Their biggest concerns was liability and parking at their park, or at their camp. But now that there's parking at Middle Hattam Road, there's parking at Depot Hill Road, and there's potentially parking at the new Dairy Queen, uh, which is the old Jarvis property. There's no need for anybody to park at the Y camp for, um, access to the, the park. And, uh, I told Michelle yesterday that we would put a gate at the end of her road that would connect to the trail with signage that would say that this is not an access to the trail and it's private property. So, um, I don't, that, that really is a big problem they had, or a concern they had, and that doesn't seem to be a concern anymore. Uh, liability, they understand that they have insurance, we have insurance, there's no problem with that. They are meeting next week, so there's not enough time for us to give them a, like a boilerplate agreement, uh, information package. Uh, but we can do that before September, cause that's their next Board of Directors meeting, so that's where we are.
So this would pick up the trail where it ends now at Butler's?
It would start, yeah, it would start where it ends, and it would go all the way to William Street Extension.
All right, so you've already kind of skirted the Y, haven't you?
No, we still have to go through the Y's property.
There's still some more Y's property in it?
Right, as a matter of fact, where it ends, it's still Eversource, but then from Eversource, the road that Butler uses is the YMCA property.
Oh, okay, I didn't know that.
So we're south of that.
Yeah.
And so that would be the YMCA property, until we get back up to the Butler property and Eversource property, and then it crosses. And we met with Butler a few weeks ago, Susan and I, and Vince and Bob.
Good.
Great, they, they are very supportive of having the trail, uh, go through their property, um, probably closer to their pond, rather than closer to Route sixty-six, which is good, because then you have a, a line of sight when trucks are coming in. And people can see them, the trucks can see people that are crossing.
Will the trucks have to cross the trail?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll have to have some barriers.
All kinds of lighting, as a matter of fact, the, the blinking lights that are solar, that could warn people who are on the trail, and warn people on the trucks, both ways, saying that this is a crosswalk. And, uh, there'll be stop signs for the pedestrians and the bikers as well.
So this is in the planning stage, not in the actual, we don't have the money to do this.
Okay.
So what Lou is referring to is, there's still money in our grant that we have permission now to use on a potential routing. So what, what Lou is doing is setting up where that trail will continue, and our engineers are looking at that. So that's the phase that we're in right now.
Can you use the remaining grant money for the engineers?
Yeah, that's what we're doing.
Okay, but then we have to go get another grant or-
Because we need that to ask for the money. We have to have a plan to prepare, to send forward. Last thing is, uh, Jim Hill and I spoke, and, uh, the property swap at the fairgrounds, uh, owned by the Exchange Club, uh, is going forward. We have a plan of the land swap agreement. George Law is working on easement or right-of-way language, so that if, in fact, the swap went through, the town would own the entryway to the road that we own, and then land to the east of the road that's owned by the town would be swapped for that entryway. In doing so, you need some language, legal language from an attorney, for an easement or right-of-way, so that the Exchange Club can use that when they want to have a fair, well, when the fair wants to be there, or any other function that, that the Exchange Club wants to host at their place. So, um, we're at a point where we have new, new surveys, and the, um, that will go, go to our attorney, take a look to make sure that everything looks right. And then it's after that, uh, George Law will present us the easement or right-of-way information. Uh, and then maybe we can make the swap, and then that would be access from Route sixty-six to the town road with a potential of getting to the river, where land that the town owns already, that could be used-
You mean Route seventeen A, not sixty-six?
I, sorry, sorry, seventeen A.
Just, just-
Stand corrected, yeah.
Anybody's paying attention out there?
Yeah, Route seventeen A. And, um, and that would give us access to the river, which, uh, according to the plan of corporate-
Conservation and development.
Conservation and development, is one of the main things that we would like to do, is get access, public access to the river. So that could all work together, um, down the road. Down the road is always a, a word that we use, a phrase that we use a lot, because nothing gets done in a day or two. It's down the road.
Not the government. Question for you, this road here, um, would this be town property, and we would give them an easement to use it?
Right.
Cause initially, it was the other way around, I believe, when it was first proposed.
Well, yeah, the, uh, most of that road is owned by the town, but there is a section that's owned by the Exchange Club. So the, um, the whole road now-
We're going to take the whole road?
Would be owned by the town, and there would need to be some type of easement or right-of-way to the Exchange Club, so they could use it for any time they need.
Okay, but that'll give, potentially give us our access to, good night, to the river.
Right.
All right, so, so basically, from seventeen A, we would end up with those other part, with basically with the, the access and the access road. There says proposed easement in favor of the town of Portland, I would assume the easement would be in favor of the Exchange Club at that point. Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think that's why I was asking that, I think the wording might be wrong.
That, that's, I was at the same question, so.
Okay.
And we're going to transfer some land that we have up to the road, right, and then they would be transferring the other land. That's, I think, what we had talked about that was much more balanced, so, makes sense.
More to come. So do you think, seeing we're on this river, I think, do you think we should try to get that, um, committee? What, do we reform a committee?
Pretty soon.
Your new kayak launch committee?
I, I don't think we're-
Do you think we're still a little-
Yeah, I don't think we're ready yet.
Okay.
I think we, we'd have to finalize on this first.
Okay.
But I think that would trigger us to say, okay, now that the land swap has been made, and we know what land we own and where we can go, and if we can go to the river, you know, let's do that.
I had one volunteer give the name, yeah.
Yeah, okay, but we haven't spoken with her.
No.
So, all right, that's why I was asking.
So if anyone else is interested, they can contact my office, and we'll put their name on the list for consideration to be on that committee.
Oh, well done.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice. Any other status and committee reports? Public comment?
Come on, guys.
Um, any informal discussion?
Probably just one item, um, just, uh, Paul and Lyons are working with the Town Public Works. Uh, this is, you know, we had the proclamation a couple of weeks ago regarding, uh, Public Works Week. And as an offshoot of that, there's been an event planned that's for this coming Saturday. It's going to be, uh, working with Adams Market, and it's basically, it's a Phila Public Works truck event. And the idea is to basically raise, uh, basically bring in food and bring in resources for the Portland Food Bank. The, the, the truck will be there from eight AM to two PM on Saturday, so.
And the Ham Radio Club's meeting on Saturday as well, it's a talk.
Stocked right now?
Yeah.
How are they doing on their food supply?
Right now, right now they're doing well.
And, yeah. Is that called the Ham Radio Club?
I know, yeah, there's always a need, I was just curious if the shelves were bare.
So the Mel-Sex Amateur Radio Club is meeting this weekend, it's an annual event that's held.
Our sixty-third year.
Wow, sixty-three years. So that will be at the Senior Center, um, two o'clock, there's a special gathering on Saturday, and then Sunday they're there as well. Anything else? Yeah. I'll be there around two on Saturday.
There's always stuff going on in this town.
Absolutely.
Sure.
Uh, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Ralph, all in favor?
Aye.
Any polls? Motion carries, thank you. You're late. Thanks very much for coming.
Thank you.
Yeah, keep in touch. Good night.